I'll call this four supervisors meeting over. And first thing, we need a motion that we didn't talk about anything in closed session.
We share it out, make a closed session, all that was discussed with section two point two dash three seven one one, A three, a discussion with consideration of acquisition of real property, A five, industrial business prospects, and A seven, legal.
Got a motion in the second, all those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous? Next thing on agenda, we'll have the invocation by Ms. Lori Hester and pray it to Ms. Kett.
Good evening, please. We're thanking for this night and the opportunity that you've given us together here. And I just pray that you would just let your spirit of wisdom and knowledge roll upon the leaders of our county. I just pray that decisions will be made for our county and for our infrastructure. Thank you for all the wonderful things that you provide us and do to national resources. Respect it for all the things that we do, your honor and your glory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda and additional agenda.
So move.
Thank you.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Need a motion on the minutes from the previous meeting on March twenty seventh, April the eighth, and April the twenty fourth.
Make a motion to accept as written.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous? Financial update, Mr. Charlie Atkins.
Good evening. Per communication with Debbie Schwartz today, we had eight million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars in the bank, in the, excuse me, in the general fund to pay the bills tonight. Request is less than that, but once they're paid, this will leave about three hundred thousand in the general fund checking account, which, those other checking accounts, but we're talking general fund here. Overall, our expenditures for today are down, but if we have a second meeting this month, we're about online with where we were last year. We're about in line with the budget. It means we'd have one more month to finish out the budget, and it looks like we're about where we were last year at the same time. Any particular questions? Just give it a shout.
Thank you. On the additional agenda, on appropriations, general, county is one million, six hundred and thirty thousand. Social service made of fourteen through the thirty-first, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. June the first through the tenth, sixty thousand. School operating fund, three million, nine hundred thousand. School debt and capital outlay, three hundred thousand. A total general fund of six million, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Go move.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I may have heard Mr. Atkins wrong. Charlie, do you mind to, we have a, we have a total of general fund of six million, two fifteen?
Yes.
Did I hear you say something about three hundred thousand left in the general fund?
We have about three hundred thousand left in the general fund now than we had this year, at this time last year.
So that's prepared.
Right.
Okay, I, I misunderstood. You thought that's what the remainder of the general fund is?
No, we've got two million there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous? EDA fund four, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chairman, I question on that one also, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Would it be okay with the four supervisors for Ms. Hester to give you a short explanation of what's included in that fund for?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the money that's included in that EDA fund for is the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for New Ridge. So that's what that's for. And to also give you an update on their progress, they're looking to purchase and install their major equipment and begin staffing their, their positions in late August and the early September timeframe. Prior to that, they plan to renovate and reconfigure a portion of the plant and recommission some of the existing auxiliary systems. But they're, right now, they're just continuing to take care of the property and keep it up to date. Mowing the lawn, they've also got some security folks there, but they will plan to hire in late August or early September.
This is the remainder of the funds if you want to.
Okay, and the remainder of the funds, there's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's the trough funds. There's twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents for branch highways. Two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars for Jerry Signs. Five hundred, forty-nine dollars, thirty cents for Anderson and Associates. Two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-five cents for ECS. That makes a total of four hundred, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Seven to zero. Courthouse project, twelve thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-six cents.
Go move.
Thank you.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Six opposed, one, six to one. Blick Skillet Housing Project, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and two cents.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous? County payable listing, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous? Anything you can get, Mr. Carter? Five, six minutes before we're finished.
Circles property recommendation, probably.
Okay.
No, but you haven't like, you got, you got forced on the cars or what?
The Circles property, maybe Matt, he's in the room today. Six sheriff's vehicles and one animal patrol vehicle that are, that are, uh, very, very surplus. They're, they're useful if we can. So the, uh, many, unanimous, they recommended to declare in the three fourteen, three fifteen, three thirty-five, three twenty-six, three thirty-four, three thirty-two, the animal patrol, shuttle pickup. Those are the Circles property.
Committee recommendation? I have a committee recommendation, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous?
Sure, we can probably also do four, three, one, we're thinking of saying, that's also, which is, uh, on page thirty-six, thirty-seven. Smith County has received the four for life payment of the emergency medical services, makes to the county. Decision funds, uh, set to document for the financial period of March the thirteenth through February the fourteenth. Amount received is twenty-eight thousand, twelve dollars and forty cents, classified easily to Mary and Lifesaver Group. Now, it's, him and his son, the rest is, well, sugar growth, Lifesaver, that's about three dollars and ten cents a piece. Right before approval of appropriate, uh, due funds to be paid.
All right. What a pleasure, you're the both.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous?
How about we entertain Mr. Arthur Barker for a second, whenever he's in the background.
Mr. Barker?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I come to you this time just about every year for a block grant that the sheriff's office receives from Department of Criminal Services. This year, we were awarded six, or one thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars in federal funds, with a local match of being one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which brings it to one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. The decision was made, actually today, to purchase six conversion kits for the school resource officers for their service weapons. These conversion kits turns their sidearm into a long gun. And the total cost of the project would be two thousand and ninety-four dollars, which sixteen hundred and ninety-seven dollars of that being paid by the state and us matching it at three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, if the board so approves it. That's it in a nutshell.
Any questions?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
My second. Got a motion in the second. All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Let's push one upstairs.
We could, uh, have the board to, uh, organize and consider setting a public hearing for the county budget as well as a public hearing for water sewer rate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to add to the water sewer rate, hearing that we'd also be discussing the ordinance, the, in the Smith County Code, and not just the rates. So the add will be addressing both the rates and the ordinance.
Okay. Well, it's a pleasure, you're the both.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for the county budget for June the tenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six P M.
Six fifteen.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second. Got a motion in the second. All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous?
I'd like to point out, you said you now have a C D. I know this will burn, it has the expected revenue on it. Please take time to review that. Keep in mind that these do not reflect actual state numbers at this point, because the state still is not implementing the budget. We're using current state numbers, uh, estimates. So if and when the state does alter the budget, we'll make a good point to do that.
I need a motion, set a public hearing for the water and sewer rate.
So move. It's caught P M.
And we include the, uh, ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. For a public hearing, June the tenth, at six P M. All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous? All those in citizens time. Mr. Randy Overbay.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I, I mentioned to Kelly, I am on the agenda, so I'm going to talk about the same topic. So I don't know if that's an appropriate use during citizens' time or not. I bet I'm the one that's.
So that was just removed from the agenda.
Okay, that, that would be, that would be fine, thank you. Again, I wanted to thank the board for passing a resolution recognizing May as an extension, uh, month. As you may have noticed coming in the signage and the banner on the hallway. Actually, last, uh, Thursday was the exact day, our one-hundredth anniversary of extension. We're having an open house tomorrow, uh, from noon to six. Wanted to invite not only the board, but, uh, the folks in the audience to come out, meet the agency, what all's going on. Uh, there'll be displays upstairs, we're on the fourth floor. And also, we're celebrating history tomorrow, we're also making some history tomorrow. Because at five-thirty, after a short program on the history of extension, we'll be graduating our very first class of master gardeners in Smith County. That's going to be something that the board can use, uh, at their discretion. That is a, a trained volunteer educational force to help the citizens. Uh, we planned some things as far as the library goes, uh, to make ourselves available, uh, to help, uh, homeowners, especially our gardeners. So we get flooded with those questions this time of year. So that, that's going to be a resource for the county that if you think about, as far as volunteer time goes, uh, the National Labor Statistics Board, I think now values that, close to twenty-one dollars an hour for each person. So that's a, that's a great resource for the county that we can take advantage of, doesn't cost us a penny. So, uh, want to make you, uh, aware of that. Again, tomorrow from noon to six and graduation at five-thirty, so anybody can come out, we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up for citizens' time, if anyone else wishes to speak. Here and now, I'll close citizens' time.
Chairman, I have another suggestion, if you might.
All right.
Through the, through the column, I think I see Beth Murray in the back there.
Yes.
Maybe a good opportunity to have her come forward, ten years as well.
All right.
Chairman Blevins and members of the board, we appreciate the chance to come and visit with you all this evening. And wanted to share with you a proposal that our staff has developed to utilize the, um, the funding that's available through the Secure Rules Schools Act for use of, um, Smith County in terms of projects that can take place on the national forest lands that are within Smith County, with a primary focus of improving maintenance of existing infrastructure, um, enhancing the forest ecosystems that are there, and restoring and improving the land health and water quality. And what we've done is try to weave together this opportunity to improve a forest road corridor that actually goes from Route six hundred across Forest Road eighty-four and ends up at Hurricane Campground, which is very close to Route sixteen. And by looking at some fairly modest improvements, because this is not a large amount of money, I think that what we can do is focus on better ways to enhance people's access to the national forests through there. Looking at, um, particularly hunting and fishing, hiking and camping, and just driving, driving for pleasure. Jay Martin is our area wildlife biologist, and Jay's got some specifics about, uh, the proposal, which you have a copy of there, as well as a map that shows this corridor.
Thank you. Uh, the ten-mile corridor really does highlight, uh, the scenic value in the natural resources of Smith County. Whether it's for a day trip or staycation or a out-of-state vacation, uh, the Forest Service Road eighty-four really does have it all. Um, with the bookends consisting of the six hundred overlook and Hurricane Campground, the corridor also has eight trails easily reached from the Forest Service Road for hiking, biking, and horseback riding. Uh, six trout streams, hunting opportunities in the five-thousand-acre Sing Mountain National Scenic Area is just north of the road. And it certainly gets the use, uh, within your packet, you, you may see the, um, uh, the recently, uh, recent article from Backpacker Magazine that the area was featured in. And I think that probably has drawn some attention to that particular area. And as a, as an example, um, actually, while putting together this particular proposal, I was in the area on March twenty-eighth and GPSing some points for the map that you see there, and ran across, uh, twelve vehicles within the first mile, um, upstream of Hurricane, Hurricane Campground. Now, twelve vehicles may not sound like a lot of vehicles, but, you know, in, at, towards the end of March, um, for a Forest Service Road, it really is, uh, heavy traffic. Unfortunately, the use, um, also can cause issues. Uh, vehicle traffic has degraded the road, and user-created parking has caused erosion and soil instability. The year, the years have also taken a toll on most of the directional signs throughout the area. And with additional funds, um, we can proactively protect trout waters of Hurricane Creek and, uh, from, uh, increasing, uh, the, the gravel and stuff like that in the road and the, the parking areas that have been, uh, created by users. Provide adequate pull-offs for access to the creek and fishing, um, and the woods for hunting, and enhance directional signing, uh, to assist visitors in finding the area and the trailheads. If given the opportunity to utilize the additional funds, we'll be able to move forward way beyond the normal routine maintenance of the area and actually accomplish the finishing touches to the important, this important Smith County resource. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Do you have some more?
No, sir, I was just going to say, if there were some alternative, um, suggestions from you all or from other members of the county, we'd be happy to entertain those and, and prepare a proposal that could go before the, um, the Resource Advisory Committee that will then meet with the Forest Supervisor for his decision on the proposal. But otherwise, if you're, um, agreeable to this, this, um, general project that we've presented, then we're happy to, to work toward trying to accomplish that.
What a pleasure, you're the both.
Chairman, we need a motion to.
Should this go before the budget committee? Should this go before the budget committee?
This is one that was awarded to county, so it's a, it's a percentage in the, or the Forest Service is eligible to utilize with their type of practices they described. Beth and I have spent some time talking about it, and I review it. I responded to her saying, I thought this was a matter of plan for them to utilize those funds, and that's what generated the, the notice. And hopefully, again, the authority from the board will pursue this, uh. This is not actually about the issue, this is.
I make a motion, order it.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, she can probably raise your right hand. Unanimous?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Is, this, this starts at Hurricane Campground on sixteen, and it's ten miles?
Uh, it's ten miles really from Hurricane on across eighty-four to get to Route six hundred at approximately Old Skulls Gap location.
And it's, it's like the trail that's on the, that's on the map. This is a, an automobile driving trail, or it's?
Forest Service eighty-four is a forest road. And there's a number of trails that lead off that. There's also some, um, what would say administrative use roads that are not open to vehicular transportation by the public that can be utilized for horseback and for hiking.
But it's a pretty drive through there. Right above a house. Bring me out of here, crack in the branch.
That's what I was getting at.
It's approximately fourteen, probably fifteen miles from Mary to get to, you know, Hurricane Campground to start the actual corridor that we were focusing on to do the additional work.
And it's existing now, it's just maintenance and signage and that kind of upgrade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Do y'all have anything to do with the archery service that was involved with, uh, fire on Flat Top Mount, over Clinch Mountain? About three weeks ago. Was that Charles's apartment?
No, that was the gang department, the state.
Oh, Fisher Gang Department?
Right. And, um, I think our only assistance with that was a helicopter that we have on contract that was, was sent over to the area.
Well, they've done a great job.
Excellent.
Thank you. Who would have made us, Mr. Carter?
Chairman, members of the board, um, take the opportunity to, uh, I do sit with gentlemen in the audience. We're, uh, we're fortunate to be approached tonight by two members of the Henry Hurry Faculty as well as two representatives to Southwest Virginia School of Medicine. They would like to present to the board, and both update on the Henry Hurry School as well as give some talks on the proposed school of medicine. Tonight, we have Dr. David Haney, who is the Vice President of Academic Affairs and Dean of Faculty, at Henry Henry College. We have Mr. Dennis Tabor, who's the Vice President of Strategic Leadership and at Henry Henry College. And we have Terrence, uh, Dean of Defense and Chief Operating Officer, Southwest Virginia School of Medicine. So I'd like to ask those gentlemen to come forward.
Thanks very much. I'm Dave Haney, the Vice President for Academic Affairs, and, uh, we were here about a year ago. Uh, and you all generously supported us in the, uh, match for the Tobacco Commission Grant, uh, a hundred thousand dollars that went toward a total of six hundred thousand dollar grant for hiring a Dean of Health Sciences. That Dean of Health Sciences is probably in about, somewhere in Arkansas right now, on her way from Arlington, Texas to, uh, here. And she'll be here, uh, and she doesn't officially start until June first, but she's going to be working anyway, starting on Thursday. So, uh, again, it's nice to see that project come to fruition. Our name is Dr. Lou Fincher. She's, uh, head of the Kinesiology Department at the University of Texas Arlington. Comes very well recommended, I think she's going to be a great member of the community as well as a great leader for our, uh, health sciences initiatives. We're, uh, as you know, we had a setback with the Doctor Physical Therapy Program. Set us back six months. On June first, we're submitting the accreditation paperwork again. Uh, this time, we hired a very qualified consultant to help us with it, somebody who started, the only person on the planet who's started two DPT programs in succession in the last five years successfully, so. Uh, and we're working closely with him and with Dr. Fincher, so we're pretty confident that it's going to work this time. We already have twenty-five students, uh, who have put down deposits in order to start the DPT program in January. So, you know, we're not having any problem recruiting students, and we've got between now and January to get more. We can get a maximum of, of thirty-two. So, things are coming along with that. If you haven't seen it yet, the, uh, the DPT building, the former education building at the prior Smith County Community Hospital, it's been completely renovated. We've got furniture and equipment in there now. Uh, we're going to put some signage up pretty soon. And, uh, then the next step, of course, is to, uh, start renovations on the hospital itself. We have, um, you know, we're, we're renegotiating the, uh, what you probably know about the five million dollar grant from the Smith County Community Foundation, simply putting the milestones back six months, basically. Uh, so we'll be working with that. We also have an Appalachian Regional Commission grant for five hundred thousand dollars that has, has been sent to the feds, you know, the, uh, previous governor sent it forward. And we're just doing the final negotiation with, uh, the Appalachian Regional Commission on that, so we expect that to come through very quickly. So, we're pretty happy about that. Um, Lou Fincher will be, uh, you know, the first thing she'll do is be looking at starting the next programs, um, occupational therapy, physician assistant. And we hope to have about two hundred and thirty students and about, uh, thirty faculty members and various staff up there, you know, within the next few years. So, um, that, that project is, is, I think, pretty much on, on, on track now. And we certainly want to thank you for, uh, you know, all the support that the county's given us and, uh, and we know that the, the county doesn't have deep pockets, and we really appreciate what you've done for us. Uh, the other thing I want, we wanted to do tonight was introduce you to, uh, Tarek Zaidi, who is, um, going to talk to you a little bit about some, uh, an expanded healthcare initiative for Southwest Virginia.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, appreciate you all inviting me and giving the opportunity to give you an update on the project. What we've been doing is, is, as you know, this. doing is, is, as you know, this project started as initiative of King College a number of years ago. And that project, shall we say, somewhat plateaued. And in two thousand and twelve, the project was handed off to an independent board, an independent 501(c)(3) entity based in Virginia, which I'm the representative of. And we spent a lot of time taking a look at health education in the region, what the needs are, and what the best way to build a project in this region would be to help the people of Southwest Virginia. I don't think there's any question that if you look in Southwest Virginia compared to the rest of the state, if not the rest of the country, there are some significant needs today. And looking into the future, there are going to be some continued significant needs for the access of healthcare to people. Just for basic statistic, if you look at the benchmark for the number of physicians per patient, there's one physician for about one thousand sixty-seven patients in, that's the national benchmark. In the Commonwealth, it's one for one, one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. And if you look at, in Southwest Virginia and the eight towns and counties, look about one for every two thousand seven hundred patients. And so, there's clearly an, an issue with access to care. And that funnels down, not just to being able to see a physician, it funnels down to healthcare morbidity, mortality, those sorts of things. So, what we've done is we've taken a long time, taken a look at this project and figuring out what the best way to do it. Now, as we put it together, we put the project together with a vision of being a partnership project. It's for the community. We want it to be built by the community. We want a community project that is going to be able to sustain itself and, and be a real asset. So, I think we've all seen, or at least heard about, the RAM project and the Health, the Health Wagon on Sixty Minutes. Those sorts of things have highlighted the dire issues that we have here. I mean, RAM is a fantastic project. The Health Wagon is a fantastic project. But for many, it's their sole, their primary care. And that shouldn't be it. We shouldn't have people waiting for that. We need to have some resources locally. So, we started to think about the best way to do it, and instead of try, trying to stand it up on our own, we looked at partners. And one of the first partners we talked with was Emery and Henry. They're doing their allied health program here. And we think that that's a really good match. They're, as you all know, a very credible, experienced group of folks. They're great to work with, and they're based in Virginia. And they've already got a healthcare focus. So, we've, we've sat down and talked with President Trump, with Dr. Haney and a number of folks, and we really think we're working on a plan that's going to work. We were also in discussions with the University of Virginia about working on the M.D. side of things. And the University of Virginia, they're, they're very involved with RAM. They're involved with another, a number of healthcare initiatives throughout Southwest Virginia. But they recognize there are more needs, and they want to be a part of that, and they want to be a part of the solution. So, with that, they are supporting an initiative along with us and Emery and Henry to work on medical rotations, clinical rotations for medical students, work with local hospitals to develop residencies and additional clinical rotations. And what's important is not only that you, you have educational initiatives going on, but you also have to have training, and you have to have enough clinical resources. And there's a dearth of those in the region. But there are some ways that we can expand those, and we're going to work with the hospitals, work with UVA Health System, work with a number of other folks to try and expand those. And the, the beauty of that aspect of the project, I think, is really one of the most exciting pieces of it. And what that is, is we're looking at developing some clinics. Clinics that'll staff, be staffed by UVA specialists and subspecialists. And what that means for, for both the project and for the people is this. If you have a child who, or, or a family member who has a need to go to Charlottesville, to go to Bowman Gray and Winston-Salem, to go to Duke or otherwise, just for a regular visit to, to a specialist that isn't in the region, we're going to try and bring some of those specialists into the region. We're going to create access to care for folks who have to travel otherwise. It's not going to address every healthcare issue, obviously, but we're going to try to work on those. It's going to be a place for students to train. It's going to be a place for physicians to work. It's going to create jobs. We'll have development out of this. So, we're really excited about that potential of it. And we're excited about the potential with Emery and Henry here in, in Smith County and Marion with their healthcare initiative, while we're working on in Abingdon, and being able to look throughout the, the region, to partner with other groups to, to bring all of this together. We think that we can really do something special that is a viable, it's a sustainable, and it's a project that's reasonable for this region and that we think can make a real difference. And so, that is, in short, what we're talking about doing. And, you know, as healthcare is changing, the project is, is adapted to that. It's, we're looking at, at an interdisciplinary training model where physicians train in teams with what Emery and Henry are working on now, is Physicians Assistance. I mean, those folks, those Physicians Assistants, the Nurse Anesthetists, folks of those, in, in those careers, they're going to be delivering a lot of frontline care. Medicine's changing, and we're going to be on the front edge, the front, front edge of those changes. So, just appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know you all have a, have a heavy docket tonight, but wanted to, to bring you up to speed on what we're doing, and look forward to bringing further updates and, and, and working with Emery and Henry, and working with you all in the community. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions? Anyone have any questions?
Great. Again, it's, it's a pleasure to meet you all, and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Milestone, Ms. Clay.
I'm going to pass down a two-page agreement. You may recall a while back that the school board sought approval of leasing out some of the school sites for cell tower monopools through Milestone. This is a memorandum of agreement that would provide that we would transfer properties that are currently technically owned by Smith County Board of Supervisors to the Smith County Public Schools, should that site be attractive to Milestone for marketing. And that way, the lease can be a little bit less complicated to draft. And so, I just wanted to get your approval on this memorandum of agreement that pertains to that milestone telecommunications, marketing agreement that schools will be proceeding
What's the priority of the vote?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding for Milestone.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, shake a five, raise your right hand. Unanimous?
We did, we met, I guess it was last week, but the Insurance Committee, we were recommending that we let Smith Land Regional Library and the board and the administration proceed with some insurance flexibility options. They've got some ways that they can, there's some costs that they can reduce there. So, we'd like to let them proceed on to that.
That's committee recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, shake a five, raise your right hand. Unanimous? Is that it, Ms. Clay?
I'll give you an update on the mega site.
All right.
The, as you all know, the, the EDA has been working on the former Epic Facility Site down in Chillicothe. The site is about ninety-five percent ready to go. The stone pile that is in the middle of the site, we're evaluating moving that to a different location on site to enhance the, just the vision of the site there. The site was all messy. It didn't seem like that, that moved the ice or whatever. Now, the site's now supposedly clean. That actually pile sticks up. So, we're, that should happen over the next month or so. And the site, whole site's been sealed. It'll probably start to seal it as the rain will just have it probably start seeing some concrete rest coming up. It's looking good. We're ready to contract this into the site.
Thank you. We've got about three minutes. Are we done with that? That's one on there, useful.
If I, if I could give a quick update, mentioned earlier that I handed out CDs, however long overdue, the budget process. I would like to point out that when you pull those up, you will notice two things. In our current budget, we have an operating budget of nine four B, two hundred and seven, six thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. I'd like to point out that your proposed budget, which I have in front of you, burned on copy, which you have, so the budget for its managers and review is eighty-nine, eight, seven hundred forty thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars. I would still like to get further to point out that this is a balanced budget. At the next month, public hearing, ten and a half's information that companies that identify us, facts such as when the last time there was such a balanced budget in the county, and continue on to identifying how the committee as well as others have worked to make this process equitable going. Encourage you to take the next few weeks to look through it, look at the line on, point yourself with it, and when you come back in June, I'll give public hearing.
Thank you.
Start reading the rule, the advertisement.
Open this public hearing on a special permit for Conor Rock Retreat House. Can you read the advertisement, please?
The Smith County Board of Supervisors will have a public hearing on Tuesday, May thirteenth, December fourteenth, five forty-five P.M. Soon thereafter, in the Smith County Office Building, one twenty-one Bagman Circle, Marion, Virginia, to give a civil and common application for an annual music or entertainment festival event under the Code of Smith County for January. The Conor Rock Retreat House is a festival application for an event to be held from Saturday, June fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. This event will be held at Conor Rock Retreat House, sixty-four oh-two Conor Rock Road, Tri-Devil, Virginia, two four three seven eight. It will be held between the hours of ten A.M. and fourteen. At this public hearing, subject rules, procedures, and board supervisors of Smith County, any person that appears to state this review is not on. A copy of this application will be attached and planned on following the office of the County Administrator in Smith County at the address given above, and may be viewed when they comply at eight A.M. and five P.M. Interference with American disabilities and persons requiring special assistance will can participate in the public hearing. To contact Clay Williams, Smith County EDA Coordinator, at seven eight three three two nine eight, at least forty-eight hours prior to the hearing. We'd like to point out, prior to reading the rules, that we have received all the necessary information for this. I'm not sure who is intended as representing, but I think we may have a slight operation to debate based on unfortunate circumstances. I know the rules.
Read your room, please.
Public hearings. In instances in which persons address the board due to terror that has been allotted a specific time on the agenda, they shall limit the remarks as filed, except in extraordinary circumstances. Number one, a person speaking for himself or his immediate neighborhood events. Number two, a person speaking for an organization whose membership is represented in the entire district, not for this. Number three, a person speaking for an organization whose membership is represented in the entire county, ten minutes. Except in emergency circumstances, no action shall be taken by the board following a public hearing, and the issue shall be continued until the next brief agreement. Recognition shall be given on behalf of the presiding officer. No person shall address the board without it first been recognized. When all public testimony has concluded and the board has considered and discussed the matter, no person shall thereafter be recognized or addressed at all.
And I have a sign up, please.
We have no one signed up, and I do believe we have some in the audience that would like to address the board.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Jean Hamm. I live in Royal Retreat, two twenty-four State Drive. But I'm Chair of the Board of Directors of Conor Rock Retreat House. And I just wanted to say that due to break-in and other circumstances, we need to change the date that we originally asked for. And we would like to have the festival in October the fourth. And we will take the responsibility for notifying everyone and making sure that the dates are changed on all of the health forms and fire department and all of that. We, we, with the break-in we had, we just can't get ready by June the fourteenth. And that's all. Any questions?
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Here and now, I'll close this public hearing.
Probably the intent of the board, now that we're not pressed for time, they'll probably take this issue up at the June meeting, and then put it on, six minutes by the board, and then grant you a temporary or a system permit, provided that you provide the necessary popular information to pursue.
Take a ten-minute recess. Take a ten-minute recess to our next public hearing. I'll call this meeting back to order and open up the six o'clock public hearing on the V dot six year plan. Mr. Carter, will you read the reversal, please?
Yes, sir. Virginia Department of Transportation and Board of Supervisors of Smith County in accordance to section thirty-three point one dash seventy point zero one, the Code of Virginia will conduct a joint public hearing in the Board of Supervisors meeting room of the Smith County Administration Office, one twenty-one Bagman Circle, Sweden, January, Marion, Virginia, two four three five four, at six P.M. on May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, through two thousand and nineteen, twenty, in Smith County, and on secondary systems instruction budget for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. Copies of proposed plan and budget may be viewed at the Whipple Residency Office of the Virginia Department of Transportation located twenty-eight forty-three Chapman Road, Whipple, Virginia.
Withfield, Virginia, two four three eight two, or the Smith County Administration Office located at one twenty-one Bag and Circle, Suite one hundred, Mary Virginia, two four three five four. All projects in the secondary six-year plan that are eligible for federal funds will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds. Persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Virginia Department of Transportation at two seven six two two eight two one five three. Persons wishing to speak at this public hearing should contact the Smith County Board Supervisors at two seven six seven eight three three two nine eight.
Thank you. Do you read the rules, please?
Yes, sir. In instances in which persons address the board through the chair of that at first been allotted a specific time on the agenda, they shall limit the remarks as follows, except in extraordinary circumstances. Number one, a person speaking for himself or his immediate neighborhood, three minutes. Two, a person speaking for an organization whose membership is represented in the entire district, five minutes. Three, a person speaking for an organization whose membership is represented in the entire county, ten minutes. Except in emergency circumstances, no action shall be taken by the board following the public hearing, and the issue shall be continued until the next regular meeting. Recognition shall be given only by the presiding officer. No person shall address the board without having first been recognized. When all public testimony is concluded and the board is considering and discussing the matter, no person shall thereafter be recognized or addressed at all.
Thank you.
Would like to mention to the board on page thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, on your agenda, on your end, I'll provide it by V dot, and we do have two representatives for things to discuss in this place.
Okay. I'll have a sign-up sheet. Mr. Joseph Copenhever, come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Joseph Copenhever. Uh, I'm the administrator for the Thomas Bridge Water Corporation. Uh, my purpose here this evening is to, uh, remind everyone here that, uh, Thomas Bridge Water Corporation has a six-inch water line which is attached to the McMullen Bridge across the railroad, the Norfolk Southern Railway tracks. And it serves, uh, the Hall Edition primarily, which has, uh, three businesses, uh, connections, a church, a church school, and a one hundred and seventy-three residential connections and families. So we have a concern, uh, of the future of that bridge, what's going to take place. Here are all kinds of rumors, and I'm sure we'll be having questions from our customers over there, uh, wanting to know, uh, if their water is going to be, uh, maintained and what, what the, uh, plan is. We're hoping that the, uh, plan does include the maintenance, uh, of our line, uh, either, uh, replace it or whatever as part of that bridge project. Is, um, I'm sure the bridge will probably be recommended for replacement. So, uh, that's, uh, what I have. If you have questions for me.
I'll, Russell will address your problems.
And Thomas Bridge, uh, Water Corporation would also like to be notified, uh, of plans and future progress on that so that we can keep our customers advised when they do call us. And, uh, keep us up to date so we can make our plans and be prepared for whatever situation may present us. Thank you.
That's all I have signed up for this public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Mr. Russell?
Good evening. I'm Jeff Russell. I'm the racist administrator at, uh, V dot, the Withfield Office. Here, uh, to discuss as part of the public hearing, the Smith County's secondary six-year plan. I'll give a short over, uh, short overview of what the six-year plan is. Basically, uh, each year's funding is allocated to every county in the state of Virginia from the C T B in order for that county to upgrade or construct their roadways in their secondary system. The money's available is plugged into different formulas that computes how much each county gets. And once we get that dollar figure, it's, uh, the county's job as well as V doc's. We partner to determine what projects we want the money allocated to. It's called a six-year plan because, uh, we're dealing with projected revenues given to us throughout the next six years. And I do say that, uh, just to make sure we understand, these are projections at best. The only money guaranteed is the two thousand fifteen-year money, this year's money. All the rest is projections that's based on revenue, sales tax, the economy. Several criteria go into the formula to determine how much we get. So do I have any questions? Y'all have any questions so far? That's just a broad overview of the six-year plan. Uh, we'll go into the six-year plan. Uh, this year's, the money that, uh, we were allotted, we, the revenue, we had a shortfall in the projections. Basically, this year's plan, we have one million dollars less than we did last year. We went from one point eight million down to, uh, eight hundred and one thousand. That being said, we're not able to add any projects to the plan this year. However, we're not taking any off. Uh, the projects are still there. They still have funding allocated in the next six years, but with the projections where they are, we, we're not going to be able to add anything, so. Kind of go over the projects that are on the plan. Uh, the first one is the Scratch Gravel Project. Uh, that project is currently underway with a, a projected com, projected completion date in mid-October. The Walker's Creek Road Project, it is underway, and we're looking to complete it in June or July. Little Walker Way, it's underway. Uh, hopefully we'll have it completed within the month. Shortly Stone Road, our plans are to begin construction on that project in April. No, that began April. I'm sorry, began April twelfth, so we started it. White Rock Furnace Road, it is fully funded. Hopefully, we can get to it possibly this year, maybe next. According to how the other projects go, how we get along with them, so. These are projects that we do with our state forces, our V dot forces. And these rural rustic projects, pretty well, we can, we can build one mile of roadway for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take a little. If you don't do it using our state forces, you don't do it rural rustic, you're looking at a three me, three million dollar price tag per mile. So it's, uh, substantial savings, uh, to be able to do it rural rustically. Whirly Rich Road, it will be fully funded in the two thousand fifteen sixteen year. Shaw Road, uh, it's fully funded in two thousand eighteen nineteen. Grindstead Hill, two thousand eighteen nineteen. Back Meadows, uh, it's looking like it's two thousand nineteen and twenty, as well as Dealer Drive, Knight Road, and Twilight Road. So that is our proposed six-year plan. It's, uh, pretty well the same as what we had last year, and that's what we're asking you all to consider. So while I'm up here, is this the right time? You want me to kindly address Mr. Copenhever and?
Yes, please.
Uh, the bridge, the railroad bridge project, uh, this week, we did get approval. Uh, V dot, we got the approval that we can approach the railroad and try to come to an agreement with them that we would take ownership of these type bridges. I believe there's thirty-one in the state of Virginia, uh, that's in the same situation. We're wanting to take ownership and, and that way we don't have to coordinate with the railroad, uh, to be able to maintain them or replace them. We are meeting tomorrow morning, uh, the District Bridge Division, the Bridge Engineers, uh, L and D Design. We're meeting tomorrow morning, uh, to be, uh, begin the scoping process on that bridge, uh, to see what we need, what we have, the circumstances, how long the bridge is, just exactly, basically beginning the design process. We're meeting tomorrow to do that. It's not going to be a quick fix. I believe I said that the last time I was here, but, uh, uh, first thing we got to do is just to see if the agreement with railroad is going to go or not. Whether it does or not, we've already got pre-scoping money that we are beginning the design process. We're trying to stay one step ahead, get the plans, the design ready. We're, when we determine who's going to own the bridge at the end of the day, as soon as we determine that, then we can start seeking funding, uh, resources to be able to put the project out to add, so. We are starting on the planning phase, so. As far as the water line that is attached to the bridge, uh, we'll certainly have that discussion tomorrow morning. I do not see why they couldn't leave it as it is. That's, that's me speaking. I'm not the bridge engineer. I know we do it and have allotted in other localities, so I don't foresee a problem with that. But we will be sure and mention that specifically, uh, as an interest of the county. Any other questions on the bridge?
I got one, I got a couple, uh. Do y'all have any feeling whatsoever of how railroad going to respond to this?
I, I think what I, what I believe is that they've already initiated the conversation, that they were waiting on V dot, the central office, to approve the agreement, you know, so.
The railroad is?
I think we've been in contact with the rail. They're aware that we're coming at them with an agreement. Now, whether they accept or not, I do not know.
Are they, they're, they're fully aware of the safety issues that we've discussed?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, I know it's not a quick fix, but I'd like to say something, some movement to what we're doing.
And then we are, and not as fast as we would like to, but we're, we're doing what we can. We, we understand the concerns and the county's concerns, the residents and uh, the safety factors that was mentioned at a meeting before, you know, I've, I've shared those concerns with them, so. We're trying to proceed as we can to stay one step ahead.
I have a question. Mr. Russell, the, the rural rustic roads, I know in the past, that was a, a whole lot easier to get funding for a rural rustic road than it was to, to upgrade an existing hardtop road. Is that still the case? I know you said like the per mile, but for rural rustic, that's, that's just basically putting an improved surface on the road that's already there. It's not widening or cutting out curves or cutting back rock or anything like that.
We can do minimal widening, minimal work within our scope, uh. You know, uh, there's a definition of rural rustic. You don't want to disturb no more trees. You don't want to do any more widening than you have to, minimal work.
But is, is it, can rural rustic be applied to an existing hardtop road? It has to be a?
Right.
Right. What are your feelings on, well, there's a road I've been trying to get something done for eleven years now, and it's, it, it never is able to get on the six-year plan because the state funding is always short every year. And, and I know in the past I've seen a lot of roads get taken off of the six-year plan and put on the standby list, and then if there's ever anything available, they, you know, get added on as well. But, um, do you see in the future of being able to add widening of ro, of a road or anything onto the six-year plan? Does that, does it have to fall in the scope of the amount of money that's given to the county before it would apply?
Yes, sir. Uh, now, the new stormwater management reg, regulations, uh, that was passed, uh, legislation was passed that any projects, uh, it was passed the last year, any projects going forward have to fall under and be designed with the new stormwater management regulations. Costs have escalated out the roof. Uh, the only type of construction, uh, that does not have to adhere to that policy is the rural rustic. I mean, we can add any project we want to do the six-year plan, but there's going to be a, a pretty substantial price tag for anything other than a rural rustic project. And I, I don't, I don't see any way around it.
Is there some now, though? I mean, do you have anything on, I mean, like all, like the, the ones that we just read, or any of those? Are all of those under a rural rustic guidelines?
Scratch gravel is one that is.
I mean, other than the bridges, I was just getting.
Scratch gravel's not a bridge. It's a, it's a one-mile project. And of course, you can see the price tag. It's a hardtop road that we're widening, straightening, making improvements, and you look at the price tag, five point six million dollars for one mile.
So, and, and I should talk to you maybe differently than here at the board meeting. I was just curious, is?
It's not that I like it or that I agree with it, you know, that's just the way we have to play.
Right, and we looked at this road, it, Smith Valley Road is the road, but we looked at it probably eleven years ago and, and had an estimate done from a stop sign to stop sign. That was doing this basically the same thing, cutting out some of the curves, you know, it's, it's just a real kind of treacherous road, but it's never been able to get on the six-year plan because funding just seems always, you know, there's less and less, so. It wasn't near at a five million dollar mark by any, of course, it may be today. That was eleven years ago.
Very well could be, and one thing that really shot the price tag up for any project other than rural rustic is the, the new stormwater management regulations. You have to, uh, build sediment basins. There's a lot more you have to do to be able to build a road other than just widening and paving and.
It looks simple, I guess, to the layman, to me. All you gotta do is cut this off and make it wider, but I get that, so. I'd like to contact you maybe sometime and.
That'll be fine.
Get your feel on this, but, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you all.
May I ask a question, Mr. James?
Yes.
Was the timeframe that you'd like to see this planned out by the board six months?
Uh, as quick as you, you can get it, two weeks, is that adequate, or do you need to wait till the next meeting, or?
And we have a, we have a meeting probably on the twenty-second, I suppose, third and next. We gave my two eleven and seventeen. I just want to get, probably days. Do you tend to like?
Probably not. I'll verify that and, and let you know, but. Thank you.
I'll close this public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on the stormwater man, Mr. Carter. Can you read the first, please?
Yes, sir.
Did you catch me tonight?
Kelly, I'm going to have to take a drink in the morning. Smith County Board Supervisor will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, at six fifteen P M. Pursuant their act, as may be heard in the Smith County Office Building, one twenty-one Bag and Circle, Mary Virginia, considered following. Adoption of the Smith County Stormwater Management Organs combined with the Eros and Set of Control Organs and Eclipse of the current floodplain ordinance in chapter twenty of the Smith County. of the current floodplain ordinance into chapter twenty of the Smith County Code. Stormwater management ordinance required by federal and state mandate. Virginia General Assembly Department of Environment Quality will require adoption of the Stormwater Management Ordinance by all localities by July one, two thousand fourteen, you can order it to take. The quality and quantity of state waters from a potential harm of unmanned stormwater combined with erosion and sediment control. Because both combined may apply to the same land disturbed activities, the two ordinances have been combined. Opt in and fees. Smith County opted in to manage the program and has thereby reduced fees currently permitted under state law by forty-five percent and eliminated fees for erosion and sediment control if stormwater compliance is also required. The Stormwater Management Ordinance provides for this unified program is intended to facilitate the submission and approval of plans, issuance permits, payments, fees, coordination, inspection, and enforcement of activities as efficiently and conveniently as possible for Smith County and those responsible for compliance with these programs. Unless exempt, the ordinance applies to all land disturbed activities exceeding ten thousand square feet and one acre or part of a larger common plan of development. The ordinance permits an agreement in lieu of stormwater management plan for construction of single-family residences. Contents for plans and requirements for long-term maintenance of permanent stormwater facilities. Plan review timing for approval or disapproval and modification of more deficiencies. Pollution prevention plan requirements on prohibited discharges, penalties, and other legal actions for violations of the stormwater ordinance and the hearing and appeals and judicial review. At this public hearing, subject to the rules, procedure of the Board of Supervisors of Smith County Virginia, any person may appear and state his or her use their honor. To comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend or participate in this hearing should contact Clegg Williams, eighty-eight coordinator, at two seven six seven eight three three two nine eight at least forty-eight hours prior to the hearing. Copy of the proposed amendment is on file in the ordinance of the county administrator of Smith County addressed given above and may be viewed during regular business hours, Monday through Friday.
Would you read the rules, please?
In instances in which persons address the board through the chair, if they have first been allotted a specific time on the agenda, they shall limit their remarks as follows, except in extraordinary circumstances. Number one, a person speaking for himself or his immediate neighborhood, three minutes. Number two, a person speaking for an organization whose membership has represented the entire district, five minutes. Number three, a person speaking for an organization whose membership has represented the entire county, ten minutes. Except in emergency circumstances, no action shall be taken by the board following the public hearing, and the issue shall be continued until the next regular meeting. Recognition shall be given only by the presiding officer. No person shall address the board without having first been recognized. When all public testimony has concluded and the board is considering and discussing the matter, no person shall there have to be recognized to address the board.
Thank you. Wait.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Um, in all honesty, I don't think I can improve on the, the summary that was published in the paper, but, um, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about this proposed ordinance.
Any question? Thank you. Thank you. Has anyone signed up? No one signed up to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter?
Can I ask a question? Is anything grandfathered in? Is this an ordinance that will take place now and?
Yeah, that's actually a good question. Um, as my friends from VDOT alluded, these are all requirements that are mandated, and they're mandated July the first of this year. So if you all ultimately approve or decide to adopt this ordinance, it would be recommended that it be made effective July the first of two thousand fifteen. Regarding grandfathering, any projects that have been started prior, um-
To the June first?
Prior to the July first, um, is grandfathered in. But there, they have a window that they must complete their project, and if they don't, then they have to, to start from square one. So requirement wise, they'll be all right as long as they continue to work and, and finish their jobs. Um, if they don't, then they, they get to back up and punt. But with luck and, and knowing that this deadline is coming, a lot of folks are working to, to complete these jobs before July the first, so they do not have to, to reapply.
This is going to affect all building, all?
Well, as, as, as all of you know, we already have an erosion and sediment control ordinance, and it regulates all development in excess of ten thousand square feet. This is essentially an, an extension of that, in the sense that we're adopting stormwater management regulations, and it, it doesn't kick in until you disturb an acre or more. Uh, but essentially all development that disturbs in excess of one acre would have to comply with these new requirements.
So homesite, you're not disturbing the whole, well, I guess you could, but-
Homesites were, were a huge debate, um, and, and up until just literally a few weeks ago, they were actually part of these regulations, and, and homesites that disturb in excess of one acre, which in all honesty, we see more of those out here than we do in, in more developed areas, because we've got longer roads, septic systems, and, and when you account for all that land disturbance, it's not actually that hard to get to, to an acre of disturbed land. Um, but until a few weeks ago, they were obligated to submit a plan and pull a permit, uh, that's, that's referenced in this ordinance. But the governor just literally signed into law, um, a, a provision for single-family dwellings to, to basically get by with an agreement in lieu of a plan, which means they have to be aware of the law, they have to comply with the law, but they're not obligated to actually get a permit and file a plan with, with us, with the county. So they got a bit of a break at the last minute.
Even though it's an acre or more?
Even though it's an acre or more, that's right. Yeah. And there was quite a bit of controversy. Some of those sites were, you know, the, the, the recommended fee by the state was twenty-seven hundred dollars. So if every single-family dwelling built that disturbed more than one acre of land had to pay that twenty-seven hundred dollars and file that plan, which that plan has to be done by a registered design professional. So you're looking at another thousand to two thousand to, to have it designed. So you, you, you add all that to the cost of a house, and, and you can imagine what, what the backlash would have been. And so that was recognized, and, and that was literally through an emergency provision changed just a few weeks ago.
And this was all state mandated?
Yeah, this is, the reality is, this is coming one way or another. Um, if we do not adopt it locally and enforce it locally, then the state through D U Q will, will enforce it through Avenue.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
Ask a question?
Hypothetically, if I wanted to put a barn up in a pasture, how does that affect that?
Actually, barns are regulated. Um, there, there are certain, farming gets a little tricky. Farming, a lot of, a lot of farming activities are exempt. Um, i- if you plow a ten-acre field for tobacco or corn or whatever, it's specifically exempt, and it's regulated by a different agency. But when it comes to, to capital improvements like barns and things of that nature, if you disturb more than an acre, then yeah, it does fall into this.
You're not going to disturb a whole acre by putting a barn up. That's what I'm, I'm asking.
Then keep, yeah, as long as it's under an acre, you're fine.
You're not going to have, you're not going to have a barn with an acre, acre footage. I, I mean, you might down, down from your barn, is that what you're talking about? Disturb the land, constructing the barn?
Right. It, it's total acreage disturb, so it's, it's the road getting to it. It's not only the footprint of the barn, but if we've taken all this dirt and created a, you know, filled in this area or have a stockpile, all of that is calculated. But I, I wouldn't imagine there's too many barn sites that are, that would cross that threshold.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll close this public hearing. I will open the public hearing on the school board budget. Mr. Carter, would you read the version, please?
Yes, sir. I noticed the public hearing on the Smith County School Budget for fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand fourteen to June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, on May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty P M. Budget synopsis is prepared and proposed in accordance with section fifteen twenty-two dash twenty-five oh six and twenty-two point one dash ninety-three, code Virginia nineteen fifty, as noted. The budget has been prepared and proposed on the basis of estimates made by the Smith County School Board. The adoption of the proposed budget shall require a monthly repro, appropriation by the Smith County Board Supervisor as required in section fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh six for incontemplated expenses. The Smith County Board Supervisor will conduct a hearing for the purposes of proceeding public comment and will propose to ignore the budget for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand fourteen. Public hearing will be held in the Board Supervisor's meeting room, one twenty-one Bagman Circle, Smith County Office Building, on May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty fifty. Subject to the rules, procedures, the Board Supervisors, at the above mentioned date and time and place, any citizen of Smith County may experience exposure of pain. A full copy of the proposed Smith County School Board budget is on file in the Office of the County Administrator, one twenty-one Bagman Circle, Sweetwood Avenue, Mary Virginia, and may be viewed during regular business hours, eight A M. to five P M. Monday through Friday. I would like to read the category of orders filed with the current, the proposed, and the difference. I'll start the revenue summary for the operations budget. For state revenue in thirteen fourteen, twenty-six million, two eighty-five, eighty-four. For fourteen fifteen, twenty-six million, one sixty-four, two thirty-nine. With a decrease of one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And local revenue in thirteen fourteen, eight million, eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. For fourteen fifteen, nine million, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. For an increase of one million, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Creditable revenue, thirteen fourteen, five million, two ninety-five, nine eighty-seven. Fourteen fifteen, four million, eight seventy-five, seven ninety-eight. For a decrease of four hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. State sales tax, four million, five ninety, six twenty-eight, in thirteen fourteen. Four million, six fourteen, four seventy-one, in fourteen fifteen. For an additional twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. And other revenue, two million, one fifty-eight, four oh two, in thirteen fourteen. Two million, two twenty-seven, one ninety-five, in fourteen fifteen. For an increase of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. Total operations for thirteen fourteen was forty-six million, three thirty-seven, one seventy-six. For fourteen fifteen, forty-six million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. For an increase of five hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. The expenditure side, construction, thirteen fourteen, thirty, thirty-three million, nine twelve, six twenty-nine. For fourteen fifteen, thirty-four million, three sixty-five, four sixty-five. For an increase of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. In administration, thirteen fourteen was a million, six oh two, three oh four. Fourteen fifteen was a million, five eighty-two, eight fifty-six. For a decrease of ninety-ten thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Transportation in thirteen fourteen was two million, two fifty-six, two ninety-nine. Fourteen fifteen was two million, two eighty-nine, ninety-one. For an increase of twenty-four thousand, six ninety-two. Facilities, thirteen fourteen was four million, two fifty-two, nine ninety-six. Fourteen fifteen was four million, two sixty-six, one eighty-four. For an increase of thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Food service, thirteen fourteen was three million, thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Fourteen fifteen was three million, seventy-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars. For an increase of forty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars. Technology, thirteen fourteen was a million, two seventy-nine, seven thirty-eight. Fourteen fifteen was a million, three forty-seven, six eighty-nine. For an increase in sixty-seven thousand, nine fifty-one. Total operations on expenditure, uh, thirteen fourteen is forty-six million, three thirty-seven, one seventy-six. Fourteen fifteen is forty-six million, nine seventeen, four eighty-nine. And the difference once again is five hundred and eighty thousand, three thirteen. Go to your second page, identify your capital outlay and debt service budget. I'll start the revenue summary for the outlay and debt service, local funds. Capital outlay, thirteen fourteen, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, one thirty-eight. Fourteen fifteen, the same, one eighty-five, one thirty-eight, the difference of zero. In local funds, debt service, thirteen fourteen is one million, seven eighty-one, two twenty-one. In fourteen fifteen, one million, nine oh five, three twenty-one. For an increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Other funds, which is identified as interest rebate, in thirteen fourteen, four eighty-seven, one thirteen. Fourteen fifteen, the same, four eighty-seven, one thirteen, the difference of zero. Your total capital outlay for thirteen fourteen was two million, four fifty-three, four seventy-two. For fourteen fifteen, it's two million, five seventy-seven, five seventy-two. For an overall increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Finally, under the expenditure summary for capital outlay and debt service, under capital outlay facilities, for thirteen fourteen, was one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one thirty-eight. For fourteen fifteen, the same, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one thirty-eight, for a difference of zero. And the capital outlay debt service, thirteen fourteen was two million, two sixty-eight, three thirty-four. For fourteen fifteen, it was two million, three ninety-two, four thirty-four. With a difference of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Total capital outlay expenditure, capital and debt services, two million, four fifty-three, four seventy-two, in thirteen fourteen. Two million, five seventy-seven, five seventy-two, in fourteen fifteen. For a difference once again of the one twenty-four.
Would you read the rules, please?
Absolutely. In instances in which persons address the board through the chair, if they have first been allotted a specific time on the agenda, they shall limit their remarks as follows, except in extraordinary circumstances. One, a person speaking for himself or his immediate neighborhood, three minutes. Two, a person speaking for an organization whose membership has represented the entire district, five minutes. Three, a person speaking for an organization whose membership has represented the entire county, ten minutes. Except in emergency circumstances, no action shall be taken by the board following the public hearing, and the issue shall be continued until the next regular meeting. Recognition shall be given only by the presiding officer. No person shall address the board without first being recognized. When all public testimony has concluded and the board is considering and discussing the matter, no person shall there have to be recognized to address the board.
Thank you. Do we have a sign-up sheet? Mr. Earl McLeod. Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Earl McLeod, eight eighty-four Sugar Street, Chilhawee. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I really think you should, uh, you should dismiss this hearing, because one of the things that happened in this is, I'll give you this. This is what he read off the you'll see on there that the purpose of this meeting is to get citizens' comments on the budget. And, and it says down at the bottom that there will be a full, full copy of the budget in Mr. Carter's office for the citizens to look at, so they can make some comments on it. Well, guess what? The school board didn't send him one. So how are we supposed to comment on something we've never seen? Or something that you've never seen, for that matter? I mean, this is, uh, uh, I mean, I don't know what, what's going on here. But one of the things, the, the only thing that I can comment on, really, is, is a few comments that I read in a newspaper. And, uh, I'll tell you, I'll just be real brief to get on these. Now, one of the issues was, they wanted to give the teachers a raise so that they wouldn't go out of the county and find better employment. Now, I, the teachers, I'm sure, they're good people. I know some of them personally, and they deserve a raise. Uh, but they've been shafted a little bit, because I don't know of any school system, uh, in the top ten in the state that would hire someone that worked, that's worked in Smith County with the conditions we are in, because we're rated way down near the bottom. They just wouldn't do that. So the, the teachers, yeah, they, they need a raise, and, and I certainly would not object to, to giving them a merit raise. I don't even know what a step raise is. Do you? Do any of you, can any of you tell me what a step, Rick probably can. He's probably the only one that can tell you what, what a step raise means. I don't know what it means, so how can I comment on it? The, uh, the other, there was another thing in the newspaper that said there was a concern about the increase in medical insurance. Well, I got an increase in my medical insurance. I have to pay three hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. It's up thirty-five dollars. And the only raise I got was twenty. And the only raise I got was twenty dollars. But now he's asking, the school board is asking me to take what little bit I've got and pay for somebody else's. Nobody's gonna help me pay for mine. And there's this thing about the debt service. You know, if, I don't understand what that is. And it's a result of having wasted so much money, citizens' money, out there at Brown Subdivision in that rock pile, when it's unnecessary. When right across the road was a place that was already flat, it didn't need an extra road, it didn't need very little to be done with. But they conned the planning commission, the senior members of the planning commission, some of the junior members of the planning commission didn't, probably didn't, had not had the experience, and they went along with the majority of the older ones. And they approved this thing illegally. And if they had done those things, one of the things, let me just give you a real quick thing on it. One of the things that was required by law, that there be a provision to guarantee the citizens in the area, to guarantee their right of privacy, that was not done. In fact, the trees that were in there, that might have been useful, that they cut down. So the debt service is, well, just let them get it from wherever they got it from to start with. But, and I did see one thing about the staff. I mean, like twenty people on the staff, and I think there's like nine or fourteen directors? And then below the directors, there are seven or eight administrative assistants? But even all those people, the average, I think, was said to be like sixty-some thousand dollars for salaries. But in order to average sixty-some thousand of salaries, there's gotta be somebody way down here at thirty, and somebody way up here at six figures to average all that. But I don't know what, I don't know if you, if you wanna have another hearing, but we don't know, the citizens do not know what constitutes this budget. So you can't say that you've had a successful public hearing because there's nothing to comment on. We haven't seen it, and they won't show it to anybody. I don't know what the big secret is. It's our money. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Shannon Harris. State your name and address for the record, please.
Shannon Harris, three fifty-seven Hill Lane. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I'm coming to you tonight as the president of the Smith County Education Association. With two hundred and eighty-four members, I am representative of the faculties and staffs of all the Smith County public schools. And tonight, I'd just like to express to you our appreciation for the discussions, the time, and the supportive efforts that have been expressed by the board in regards to the budget that is before you. A good education is not an expense, but it is an investment. And it is our hope that as the financial footing of the county continues to improve, that you will continue to support and invest in the public schools of Smith County, because a good education is good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah Combs. You state your name and address for the record, please.
Sarah Combs, Sugar Grove. I've got an update. As you know, we had a public hearing in Sugar Grove last week about the possible closing of Sugar Grove Combined School or relocation of the middle school grades. At that time, I didn't have exact numbers for our petition that we circulated around the community and surrounding area. But tonight, I'd like to report to you that I delivered a copy of that to the school board last night. It reflects nine hundred and seventy-one signatures. The Department of Education and the state superintendent also received copies of this, and I believe that Mr. Blevins might have already made copies of that available to all of you. He also has a copy of it. We hope that you'll consider funding Sugar Grove Combined School in such ways so that no changes have to be made in our community to the school. We have a lack of resources in Sugar Grove, which I've spoken about before on several occasions, and if we lose a school, we may, you know, the county may lose tax dollars if we lose a school because property values will go down. Nobody's gonna be wanting to locate to Sugar Grove because we don't have a school. And there's a lot of resources that we've created in the community. We have a farmer's market, we're trying to get cellular service, but again, if we lose our school, none of those things are gonna have a very good possibility of continuing or happening. Also, there is a video that is available on our community website of the complete public hearing that took place last week. And for those of you that did not have an opportunity to attend that hearing, I would encourage you to watch the video so that you can hear some of the input of the seventeen people who spoke in opposition of any changes being made to our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask a question, what is the website?
The website is, it's located at sugargroveva.com. And you'll find that link, the video's in two parts because of the size of the file. You'll find that on our main page. I'm gonna post the link to it as soon as I get home tonight.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up to speak tonight. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Matt Buchanan, fifty-seven thirty-two Valley Road, Saltville Ridge Valley. I'm a citizen of Smith County. Grandfather of three boys at Ridge Valley Elementary, also served on the school board for the Norfolk District. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I felt compelled. It's hard for me not to say something when I'm compelled to voice my opinion. I'm a little disappointed tonight by the turnout. No, I'm a lot disappointed. I thought we'd have to move this meeting to the high school, I really did. I thought this would probably be one of the most controversial budget meetings we maybe had ever had in this county. Got a tremendous budget cut, maybe have to close a middle school, lay off some people, make drastic cuts all over the system. And I felt like the citizens would turn out, I felt like every teacher, every administrator, every secretary, parents, grandparents, kids would come tonight to voice their opinion. This is the meeting they needed to be at, not, especially this one, to voice their concerns and let you guys know how they feel, that they want the schools to be fully funded, where we can continue to offer our kids a good education. That's basically about all we have to offer in this county right now. Our kids are going off to college, they're not coming back, there's nothing here for them. The kids that look for a trade, utility, and thank God, we've got a couple of factories that are still working, that they can hire some of them, but they can't hire them all. I don't know how many we're gonna graduate in the next thirty days, but a good portion of them will go off to college if they can find funding. A lot of them will have to leave to find a job, and that's a shame. I can remember, I'm older, I guess I'm probably older than most of you folks on the board, but I can remember when this county was booming. We'll start over in Saltville, Olin Matheson, US Gibson, Cove Mine over in Ridge Valley, Chilhawee, all those plants were full. American Furniture, come up to Marion, plants everywhere, Harwood, all those places, all those plants are gone. The textiles and furniture, all that went south. That's not any board member's fault, especially you guys weren't even on the board at that point in time. Wasn't the board at that point in time's fault. I mean, that was just the economy and the way things were. I think a pass board, I don't guess any of you guys were on this one either, that let the Pepsi plant go to With County. Every time I drive by there, it makes me mad, we should've had that. We should've had that plant. And so, like I said, I'm just disappointed with the turnout. I thought we'd get more support from employees, parents, students. I know you guys care about the school system, obviously. The school board cares deeply about education in this county. I'm not saying that the parents don't care. I talked to one fellow outside when I came in, a pretty, a leader in the county, and I asked him, was he gonna stay for the meeting? He said, no, his kid had a baseball game. Well, that's fine. My grandkids play ball tonight, too, but I felt compelled to come and at least let you know how I felt. Like I said, I had no intention of speaking. I get a little irate sometimes and rant and rave, but I do ask you to reconsider our funding. The board last night was asked by some of the members to relook at our budget and see where Dr. Robinson could cut some more. He's cut it to the bone already. He's looking at cutting, you know, a hundred dollars here and a thousand there. We need a half a million, you know, that's just superficial. We need big bucks to make this happen. I thought half the population of Sugar Grove would be here tonight. We had a big public hearing another night, two hundred people, probably. The young lady said that she had six or eight, nine hundred names on a petition to save the school. You know, where are those people? You know, where are they? I mean, I know they wanna save their school, but they should've been here tonight. Don't blame the school board for cutting funding and closing schools, and, you know, if you're not gonna come and voice your opinion, that's what these meetings are for. So, you know, like I said, I'm really, really disappointed. I really thought that we would have a tremendous turnout, we'd have to go to the high school to get everybody in there. So, you know, I'm disappointed, but I'll just lick my wounds and go sit down and ask you to reconsider the cuts that you're proposing. We have cut the budget to the bone. Dr. Robinson says we're at the point that we're depriving the kids of the full education that they need and deserve. We don't have any money, we don't have any way of raising money, we have no right, we have no means of raising taxes. So the money we get from the feds and the state and you fellows are what we have to work with, and that's all we have. The state can't even get a budget. They can't get their act together to get a budget to us. How can we have a budget when we don't know what they're gonna give us? I asked Dr., excuse me, Mr. Carrico and Mr. Campbell the other night in Sugar Grove, you know, when are you guys gonna get us a budget? Well, we're working on Medicare, and we're working on this, and we've gotta stay within these parameters and that parameter. Well, that, you know, that's great, but how can Dr. Robinson present a budget to you guys when he doesn't know what he's gonna get from his primary source of income? I mean, he's operating in the dark. And then we get a cut from the county. I don't know what we're supposed to do. I think this is gonna be an ongoing problem. It's not gonna get better until we get some people coming to this county to work and stay and not move away. And I think that falls on your lap. I mean, you know, you're the first line of trying to find some industry in this county. I met the young lady the other day down in Chilhawee. It's gonna be your new recruiter, and I think she's got a fire in her belly to get out and try to get something done, and give her some rope to do that. I saw them sowing grass on the mega site down in Chilhawee this week. They need to be digging footers for a building, not sowing grass on it to let it sit there for five years. That's what she's gotta do, you guys gotta do. So, kinda like Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about this. I'm gonna sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else come forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Chris Stone, I live in Sugar Grove. I represent Wright Valley Community Council and Sugar Grove Life Saving Crew, and I understand you all have an awesome job. Not awesome, excited that I wanna do it. Awesome responsibility, and I'm here tonight to talk about not just Sugar Grove. Yes, I live in Sugar Grove, we want our school to stay open. I know that you all have a pie, and everybody and his brother wants a piece of that pie, and there's only so much of that pie that's gonna go around. And I implore you tonight to fund the school at a hundred and fifteen percent, as they're asking, fully funded, support and fund our future. And I'm all for history, I love history, but it's history, and these kids, whether it be Sugar Grove or Ridge Valley or Chilhawee, Marion, wherever they are in Smith County, we need to fund our kids' future, and it lays in you all. And I agree with the man that spoke before me, we need some industry in our county, we need some revenue for our county, that does lie on y'all's lap. But I implore you tonight to fund our kids, fund our teachers, but mainly our kids, and let's give our kids an education so that they can go forward and lead productive lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? You come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's David Martin, I'm Sugar Grove, live on Old Brunzel Crow. I spoke at the meeting we had in Sugar Grove. I'm here to reiterate a lot of what we talked about. We talked about, I know y'all have budget constraints, I really do, because I've studied business administration. I have children that went to school at Sugar Grove and graduated. I understand your problems, but you've gotta understand our point of view. The future is not ours, we're old now. Our time has come and gone. The future is our children's. You look, I spoke about the growth of the economy in China, it's because they look to the long term. We need to look to the long term, not the short term. Sometimes we're gonna have to look outside the box. I know y'all's funding sources are limited, and I guarantee you, if you ask anybody in Sugar Grove District that has had those children in Sugar Grove, if there was any way at all they could help the school see that it was funded, there's not a single solitary soul in Sugar Grove that wouldn't step forward and say they would do whatever is necessary to see that school was funded. But we're not allowed to. There's only so much we can do. I know there've been times when it was presented about different ways that we could cut the budget, different things we could do to improve maybe the lighting or something to cut the electrical cost. But when we start talking about moving the school from Sugar Grove to Marion to save money, when it's not necessary, anything that needs to be done as far as the education with today's technology can be done in Sugar Grove. There's nothing that can't be done in Sugar Grove that can be done anywhere else in this country. We need to be concentrating on improving our county, our country. I know y'all's income sources are limited, but I guarantee you, if there was any way we could step outside the box and come up with some other way to improve the financial well-being of our schools, you would find a hundred percent support from the Sugar Grove My wife tells me I get long-winded sometimes, so I'm just gonna shut up and let y'all, let somebody else speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. Does any board member got anything?
I do.
Craig?
I would like to just follow up on what Mr. Carter had stated that the budget was not debatable after last year.
At this point, because we all have to say we don't have the budget book, but we provided the same document to you guys.
Can you stand up there?
At this point, the revenue and expenditure sheet are what we have for a budget until the state's adopted a budget as well. And so, we have that, because you all got a copy of it last week. Mr. Carter provided that to you guys, so. In the past, we've had like a forty-page book.
Identified that the school board's budgets came forward. That was basically what they advertised in the clues, is the revenue and expenditure and budget. I like you, I think you're a good guy. But here lately, I think that, I've heard it said, and it affects me now, that the board of supervisors are not fans of education if we don't completely fund the budget. We're having people give ass that we're not gonna close schools. I think that, I think to say that we are not supporters and believers of education is probably a statement of ignorance. My wife is a teacher, two children in our school system, business supports the school system, I think all these other guys here, I think they have family members that are part of our school system and are directed, you know, are directly involved with it. But I believe wholeheartedly in supporting our schools, without a doubt. Where I disagree with it is the way we're trying to get things done. I think it's as simple as I change my socks. I see you on TV, read it in the paper, I can control a little bit on the radio, but talking about how the board of supervisors are gonna close schools, we're denying teachers a raise, that's not what we do. We don't do that. We don't handle the budgeting of your allocated money. For the last seven years, the board of supervisors have given one hundred and fifteen percent of the requested budget. The Commonwealth of Virginia says that all we're required to give is about a hundred and one percent, so it would be our local match. That's an extra fourteen percent that this... that this board has done. The last time we met, you asked us to fund around a hundred and twenty-five percent. That number in dollars is around one point five million dollars. Where does that come from? In the real world, I mean, there's, like one of the citizens said, there's only so much to go right, and we're in that real world and we're having to look as a county how to cut costs. So when I'm blamed for something that I don't think I'm doing, I want to ask questions. May we go on record and say that the Smith County School Board is requesting the Board of Supervisors to raise property taxes of our citizens of at least ten percent to fund this? Is that what you all want us to go on record and say?
I'd like to address all of it, so I want you to, I'd be glad to.
You think the school s- system is in a budget crunch? Mr. Carter, is the county in a budget crunch?
Absolutely.
Given the fact that we find both of our entities in this situation, I look at things like this, and I mean, it's just common sense, and I think, I think some good old common sense is, is good here too, why in the world do we have a person in the school board in a part-time position making fifty-eight thousand dollars? Mr. Carter, do we have anybody here in the county in a part-time position making fifty-eight thousand dollars? We've got about forty-five hundred students, four thousand five hundred ninety-six, I guess, somewhere around there, our school system, give or take a couple, you're projecting that we're gonna lose around eighty next year.
That's what we lost this year.
Two thousand two and two thousand three, we had over five thousand students. Have we increased class sizes? Have we reduced teachers and instructional agents? Are we sharing principals? We're seeing and feeling cuts within the school. Now, the thing that just floors me is that in two thousand seven, the school board gave us, gave the Board of Supervisors at that time over two million dollars back, and you requested some to use for improvements on buildings. Two thousand eight, we got close to a million dollars back from the school board. Two thousand nine, one point eight million. Two thousand ten, a million and some. Two thousand se- or, two thousand eleven, four hundred twenty-nine thousand. Why are we getting that money back? I mean, we're talking to teachers, I go out into the community, I go out into the community and I hear teachers tell me, I haven't had a raise in seven years, except I'm looking back to two thousand and seven, and that we've got almost, you know, seven million dollars back, we weren't doing anything for the teachers at that point. But when the budget is at a cut, and I don't call level funding a cut, um, then we're the beast. What I believe in is categorical funding. Are you aware, are you familiar with that?
Sorry, yeah.
Some counties are doing that, and it's because of this kind of, I guess, uh, rapport between the school board and the Board of Supervisors in that county. And I just think, you know, I think it's fair for you all to work your budget and to use your people to do that, and you come up with these numbers, and then you give us this money back. I don't, I don't understand that. Uh, but, uh, but I don't think it's fair that the board, I mean, your school board people are elected, um, I don't think it's fair that you blame us for closing schools and denying teacher raises, it's like we're not really expected to be a fan of education, but a fan of administration, is how I feel. So, I just think that, uh, I would appreciate it if we stopped blaming the board for what the school board and their hired administration are doing, I think that would be fair.
May I respond to, as much as I can remember what you've said and, and, and things and, um, obviously, um, you have a right to your opinion and I, and as, as well, I've appreciated knowing you over the years, I'm not so certain that I appreciated the kind of personal attack tonight, but, uh, because there's nothing as personal, um, as far as that goes. The, um, the circumstances that brought us to this point, we have operated under, as you said, seven, nine years of a hundred and fifteen percent, it went to a hundred and thirteen one year and we were able to bring it back to a hundred and fifteen percent, we appreciate that, we, um, we operated under that formula, uh, even whenever our revenues were declining, uh, in multiple ways, the nice thing is, uh, there was some federal money, some stimulus money that helped out during that time, um, if you'll follow the, the trails of those, um, monies, it's got, I was talking about the carryover funds, there were years in there where the Board of Supervisors asked for seven and five percent back, so give full, the, full clearance of what was in there, uh, and, and the year after that was eight thousand dollars as our, the times have gotten more difficult, seven percent of our budget was six, if I can, I don't have it on me, but six hundred thousand dollars, um, and there were other things that contributed to that, that in the middle years there, there was a million dollars, that was architecture engineering fees and purchase of land for the school, which we, uh, were able to do out of, um, our budget, but it has not always, um, it doesn't work as smoothly as just saying, well, you gave back a million dollars, um, some of that was money that carried over a year and a half, um, that we were able to do the architecture engineering without increasing the debt service to the county, um, and so, um, we've always tried to be a participant at the table with the Board of Supervisors and work on issues. Um, what generated our concerns this year were, um, uh, we have obviously dropped in enrollment, the eighty student drop in enrollment was in this fiscal year, um, if you look at it from the time we budgeted last year to now, a hundred, about a hundred students, um, uh, to what we're budgeting for next year, that's a better way to say it, is that we, from where we were to where we are budgeted based on the governor's numbers as well as our estimates, um, we're about a hundred and eight students less as, as a possibility for next year. Um, in the course of that, the drop in enrollment decreased state funding in some ways, uh, also, um, there was an increase of VRS, it was over seven hundred thousand dollars, um, in order to stay in local choice, we've actually bid our insurance, uh, we just got that back, it didn't come in better than local choice, local choice still seems to be the most competitive plan, in order to stay in it though, it costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be able to stay in local choice, uh, local choice has subsidized the insurance for several years, um, with contributions from other localities. Um, I have shared with the Board of Supervisors Budget Committee that we would continue to wanna work together to try to find ways as we move forward in, in the future, if that is the desire of the Board of Supervisors to do so. Um, but ultimately, the school board raises no, no revenue, um, it's a, my opinion, flaw in the system in Virginia, but at the same time, it is the system that we work within. Um, the federal government can raise money and run debt out the, and then the state, uh, can generate revenue for school systems, which we were, um, we've lost considerable amount of state revenue, uh, and then the locality, the Board of Supervisors. Um, we at no point, um, had proposed anything other, we thought we were working under the hundred and fifteen percent arrangement, I can't say that it's a formal agreement, but, um, for nine years and then in April that was taken, I shared this with the Budget Committee, I think that's what generated, that we bring back, um, a more of a needs-based budget. Um, cutting a million dollars when you don't have any revenue is incredibly difficult. Um, and, um, you know, we have hardworking folks in all of our positions, not just teachers and staff, they're incredible, and I've said that over and over, we also have some outstanding administrators, um, and, uh, you know, that's always been, um, a easy shot for folks to take is that our administrators, and they're just as hardworking as our teachers and employees and, and the school system, um, and good folks that, that care about kids and do everything they can for our students. Um, we've cut in all aspects of the school system, um, when enrollment's dropped, we look at where it has dropped, sometimes it drops enough that you can take it in a classroom, sometimes it isn't, sometimes it's the support staff, sometimes it's the administrator, I've cut all those different types of positions, um, in efforts to, um, come to balanced budgets, um, and, and work. Uh, we still stand, uh, ready to work for the benefit of the kids in the county, um, there's not been a meeting I haven't been willing to attend for the purpose of, whether it be for economic development, to support an organization in a county that's trying to recruit people to move here, um, or to help the county's finances, which I've been asked multiple times to, you know, there are ways that we can change cash flow, um, and the school system does everything it can to make sure that we don't spend county funds until the end of the, and, and the end of the school year and maximize that, and I think we've done a really good job, we've also, um, been, um, lack of a better word, the bank for the county in some months, uh, when cash flow is, is dried up and the school system is able to hold our expenses down while there's state money coming in that the county can use in those interim times, um, and we've always been willing to come to the table and work with the county to do those type of stuff. Um, to say that, uh, the Board of Supervisors doesn't support, uh, I'm not sure where that comes from.
That message is delivered every time that you're on television, I'm not saying that, you know, that we've had a, a horrible rapport, but I have people come to me, uh, teachers that, you know, gotta help us, man, you gotta help us, you know, can you lower our insurance? Can you, you know, no, we don't do that, that's not what we do, I mean, but it's every time that you're on television at the newspaper that, you know, Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors.
The hard part is, is that you do control the revenue though, um...
But we don't control how you spend it.
Right, exactly, and so, and... What we do? Uh, we spend our...
You just put an administrator in the office upstairs this past year, that was there years before, and I had to go up to talk to this administrator, and I had to wake him up, you talk about how hard they were, I had to wake him up to have a conversation with him.
Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing.
No, public hearing is closed.
They're out of order.
No, the public hearing is closed, you're the ones out of order.
I don't have to say anything in our public hearing tonight, we're just listening.
The public hearing has closed. I asked if any supervisor had any comments, you're the ones out of line. This is our board meeting, the public hearing is done being closed.
Apology. Thank you. But I mean, that, that did disturb me, that that happened to me personally, and, um, and you know, this person been brought back to this administrative office. I'm not saying anything negative against you, I'm just saying this is something that happened, it may have been a one-time thing, I don't know, but if the one time I was there, it happened. Now, um, as far as our teachers go, have you gotten a raise in the last seven years?
All of our staff have, yes, sir. We all got the, uh, five point six, similar to what county employees did, VRS, and then last year when the governors, the two percent. Minor index to what, if a teacher gets a raise, that's the only time I do, and, and...
Do you feel that you have a better advantage than the teachers and the money you make and the money they make?
I, I feel like the, I don't understand your question, but at the same time, feel like I'm fairly compensated for what I do, if you compare it to other places, you might say that I'm not, but this is not about me, it's about trying to do stuff for teachers, I've given back the two percent raise that state gave back, gave us anyway last year and, uh, for next, next year, so, in essence, my salary's the same as it was five years ago, but this is getting really personal and, uh...
Rather than trickling down, you, you're trickling down to the teachers, you're not...
You know, in our office, if you follow the charts that I've tried to provide to different folks, we had, at one point up to thirty administrators, that number is not near that now, um, we have tried to be just as we would to, at the school level, at the support staff level, at any level in the school system, tried to make, um, cuts across the board when we've had to do it, we've never tried to pick on one group or another group, uh, to do so, but all the groups have done it, we've tried to do it through attrition so that somebody sitting in a job hasn't lost that job when possible.
But you refilled a position, it could have been, you got promoted through attrition upstairs this past year.
At this point, at the point that we feel that position, it was not on the radar that we would be in the difficult budget situation we're in, and there's a need, but we, we were able to fill that position at less cost than we were paying for it before.
But you make your own situations, you make your own, if you spend a lot of money here, it's gonna come back and bite you here, you make your own situations, that's what we're trying to do on this board, we're trying to make our own situations by balancing budgets, by doing the different things that had to be done, and we've been looking at this for years. I asked you two, two years ago, if you had looked at lean, and I have not seen any, any lean going on.
We're a lot leaner than we used to be and we look at our process.
I'm talking about lean...
I understand what you're talking about.
Not, not, not cutting a few jobs, lean management, leaving that, lean management will get you a whole lot more than what you're doing right now, I promise you that, that's all I have to say.
Anything else? Thank you. Anything on old business? Mr. Clayton, you got anything on this? Supervisor comment time, Mr. Carter.
I haven't, I think quite a bit's been said already.
Mr. Dish? Mr. Burke? Mr. Riss, Blavens?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Ron Blavens? Mr. Blake Frey? Hearing none, we need to schedule it for seven o'clock twenty seconds. Motion to continue to the...
Take it.
Got a motion in a second. All votes in favor, taking five to eight in the round, hang on.